Greetings brothers and sisters in Christ. It is good to have you for our eighth session on Ephesians. Today we'll be looking at Ephesians 5:21 through 6:9. And so we'll be looking at what many would call the table of duties for Paul and his letter to the Ephesians. So let's open with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us together to study your word and to look at our responsibilities as Christians in the household and in the world. In your son's name we pray, amen. All right, let's read first. We'll do the rest of chapter five, and then we'll look at six, one to nine. So we'll look at it in two parts. Starting at 5:21, "submitting to one another out of reverence for Christ." "Wives submit to your own husbands as to the Lord; for the husband is the head of the wife, even as Christ is the head of the church, his body and is himself its Savior. Now as the church submits to Christ, so also wives should submit in everything to their husbands. Husbands, love your wives as Christ loved the church and gave himself up for her, that he might sanctify her, having cleansed her by the washing of water with the word, so that he might present the church to himself in splendor without spot or wrinkle or any such thing, that she might be holy and without blemish. In the same way husbands should love their wives as their own bodies. He who loves his wife loves himself; for no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it just as Christ does the church, because we are members of his body. Therefore a man shall leave his father and his mother and hold fast to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh. This mystery is profound, and I am saying that it refers to Christ and the church. However, let each one of you love his wife as himself; and let the wife see that she respects her husband." The first question on the page is 22 to 33 can be an elephant in the room for many people. What is the model for marriage? How do we fall short of it? Well, the first, the, the, the question on the page, the answer is fairly straightforward. The model is Christ and the church. So Christ and the church becomes the model. So we have Christ and the church. That's the model. And we'll talk about how we fall short of it as we, as we go forward. So let's, let's start with where everyone gets hung up at. And that's the first line of submitting. So, in the Greek, if you look at the Greek text, the section begins in verse 21, not verse 22. In fact, in the Greek, 22 is in the middle of a sentence. It's in the middle of a sentence that begins in 21. However, in the structure of the English, 21 goes with the last section of chapter five, and 22 starts a new idea. And then, to further complicate things, when this text comes up for weddings, the reading asks for verses one and two prior to verses 22 to 33. So if you go to a wedding and this text is used in a Lutheran setting, they'll throw in verses one and two, "Therefore be imitators of God as beloved children, and walk in love as Christ loved us and gave himself up for us, a fragrant offering and sacrifice to God." So that, those two verses are meant to sort of set the tone for what's going to follow in 22 to 33. So let's start with the idea here of submit. This is the Greek word used, "upotasiste." Breaking down the word, this is the ending. So this is showing that second person middle, if you needed to know your grammar rules. This is the preposition. So this word has three parts. It has a beginning preposition, a verb, and an ending. The ending is not all that important to understand its meaning, except that it's middle voice. Middle voice is different in its definition than active voice or passive voice. So those are your three voices in, in grammar. Active, middle, and passive. This is a middle voice, and that doesn't really matter. So what we're really going to focus on is this part and this part. "Upo" means under. So if you're going to talk about the thing is under the table, you'll use the word "upo." It's under. It's a location kind of thing. "Tasso" is the verb, and it means to order or to rank. And we see it a lot being used in military contexts in the Greek world. So when we have a word that's not used often in the New Testament or in the Septuagint, grammarians will look at how to, or how it's used in other contexts. So is it used in documents about sales and transactions? Is it used in military documents? What sort of documents from history do we have in that language? And what context do we find these words? And this word "tasso" and its noun equivalent are military type words. So they're hierarchical, military, rank, order sort of ideas here. So, we have this, so when you are under the order of, so when you're under the rank, you are submitting. And I was looking at commentary, and it had a nice helpful definition here of the idea. "willingly taking the place given by God." So this understands that there is a proper ordering of duties and people and, and thinking. So, where this begins to cause problems is how do we understand the nature of the relationship between husband and wife? And we have a tendency, I'm somewhat jumping to the third question. So let's quickly answer the second question, because it's already on the board. Who is the husband emulate and how so? And the wife? So we have Christ and the church. So Christ and the church, husband and wife. So the church is the wife, or the wife is like the church, and the husband is like Christ. So that's the answer to the second question. Who is the husband emulate? And the wife? Christ. Church. How so is again getting into kind of the topic at hand. Then the third question. Submission and leadership are God-given roles. What happens when these tasks are shirked or ignored? This is somewhat of the theme for this text, that everyone is given a place, and it's given by God. Each of us is given a role and responsibility. This is, I mean, this is fundamental to understanding how God orders the family, the, the community, the church. Is understanding each of us has roles and responsibilities. So, things like the role of husband carry specific responsibilities. The role of wife carries responsibilities. The role of parent carries responsibilities. The role of child carries responsibilities. The role of master and slave, each one carries its own set of responsibilities. We could also use employer and employee here as a more modern take on, on Ephesians 6, but we haven't got there yet. Right now, we're just dealing with this part here. So husbands have the responsibility to love their wives. We see that in the text. And wives have the role to submit or to take the place given by God, which is under the husband, and respect. So submit, respect for the wife. Husband to love and lead. I think we can put those two on there, because we have the headship idea. So, here we have the sort of roles and responsibilities laid out. Now, let's start with the husband first. The husband is to be like Christ. So that's a huge responsibility in and of itself. We are, the husbands are called to love as Christ loves, to lead as Christ leads, and to be the head as Christ is the head of the church. And so this puts a great weight here upon husbands, because, you know, oh, just be like Jesus is not necessarily particularly easy. No one's been successful at that one since Jesus. However, that doesn't mean we don't model our lives. And I suppose this is worth noting as well. This concept, this concept is not necessarily, I mean, it really isn't. It's not gospel. It's law. This is how God orders things, wills things to be. He desires this sort of situation. And when we fail to do these things, we then turn to the gospel. And the gospel becomes our model for how we relate to each other. So we're talking about, and we've done this before, there's horizontal and vertical relationships. So God and us, or me, let's use me. And then there's other people. And so I have horizontal relationships which are governed by the law. And I have a vertical relationship governed by the gospel. So in the law, I am supposed to treat my neighbor well. I'm supposed to pursue justice and pursue righteousness and to be fair and those sort of things. Be kind, compassionate. I also at times will get to serve as a servant of God and do gospel things as well. I will be able to forgive my neighbor, forgive my brother, forgive my wife, forgive my children. And so there is both a gospel and a law in these horizontal relationships. But they are primarily law-based. Gospel kicks in when the law fails. So, this idea is a law-oriented idea, which does not mean however that it becomes, that it doesn't apply because it's law and we're just gospel people. The law still applies. The law is still good. The law is the will of God. And so we have to recognize that this is what God wants our families to look like. So a couple of other things. Am I saying that a wife has to submit to abuse? No. No. Does a wife have to submit to immoral things? No. A wife submits to the leadership of her husband, and the husband is being Christ. At times, the husband will fail to be Christ to his family, in which case the wife will need to forgive and will have to decide whether she will sin in an act of non-submission or if will sin in following her husband. And this is, I mean, this is, this is one of the problems to recognize is, let's say, let's say the husband does decide to do something immoral and is leading his wife to do the same thing that is immoral. Is it a sin for the wife not to submit to her husband? Yes. Is it a sin to do the immoral thing? Yes. Both things are going to lead to a sin. And both, whatever the wife chooses will require repentance. And you might think, well, the, the wife was put in a tough spot. Yeah, all of us are. It's a broken world. All of us deal with life with brokenness. I should submit to my authorities. Do I always do that? No. What if the authority does something wrong? Then I'm both sinning when I obey and sinning when I don't obey. And so all of these, all of these relationships somewhat entail sin, because we're going to deal with sinful people. The parents are going to be mean to their children to a point in which, you know, they might rebel against you. And they would be right to do so, except it's still a sin. The parents sin, which causes the child to sin. Because our sins don't just affect us. It affects those around us. And that's an important concept when dealing with sin and sinful people. That when we're talking about roles, sins ripple out and have effects on others and make others make choices that reflect a broken world. So wives can't hide behind submitting, in a sense. Nor can husbands hide behind leading. What I say goes. Okay, but what you said was stupid. Yeah, so it's still sinful. So even as the head of the, head of the family, the husbands can sin, and the wives can sin. Anyone can sin, and they can sin in any role, even if it's a God-given role. Because that's the problem with the law. We don't follow it. All right, so, no, you don't have to submit to abuse. No, you don't have to submit to sin. However, recognize that at times when you don't submit, you are in fact sinning and therefore should ask for repentance. But your life is full of repentance, so that shouldn't be anything new to you. If you think you don't have to be repenting every day, you're not paying attention. The other thing to note here is the fourth question. What role does love and respect play in marriage? And that, it's, there's a whole book in my office dedicated to this idea. And if you want to look at it, it's available. But the idea is that women want to be loved primarily, and men desire to be respected. So, there is a, the idea of using language that reflects love towards women and language that reflects respect towards men. And you can see this, I mean, you can, so a perfect example of a breakdown of this sort of dynamic would be any, any media depiction of the family in the last, I don't know, 20 years. Anytime the husband is a buffoon, the wife does not give respect. But the buffoon husband always gives love. So, you know, Homer and Marge Simpson, for example, Homer always loves Marge. But Marge doesn't always respect Homer. I think everybody loves Raymond is an older show. I remember watching that when I was younger. Raymond loves his wife, but the wife does not always respect her husband. And we can see this, for some reason, we have decided as a culture that husbands have to earn respect, but wives are unconditionally loved. And so there's an imbalance. In the same way that wives expect husbands to unconditionally love them, wives should unconditionally respect their husbands if we're going to play by the same rules. Now, the other option, which I don't think a lot of people like, is if you're going to have to earn respect for the husband, if the husband's going to have to earn respect from the wife, then the wife is going to have to earn the love of the husband. We don't really like saying that. We, we'd rather live in a world of unconditional love because, you know, the Hallmark Channel exists. So this is something that we have to kind of wrestle with as husbands and wives, is are we unconditionally loving? And are we unconditionally respecting? We, the wives culturally don't have this responsibility. But biblically, they do. In the same way that Christ loves the church, the church respects Christ. There's never a point the church is like, meh, I don't care what Jesus says. The church always respects the word of Christ. Otherwise, it's not being the church. In the same way, if the wife isn't respecting the husband, she's not being the wife. So love and respect, two different responsibilities. Does this mean that the wife doesn't have to love the husband? No, but kind of. Which is a weird thing to talk about, but in our culture, you're supposed to have two people who love each other forever. Again, only focusing on the concept of unconditional love. But the wife is not necessarily called to love her husband. And I think the reason here is the, the idea of sacrifice. Okay? So here is, here is one of the other concepts of dealing with this section. And this is going to apply as we go further. The arrow only goes one direction. Okay? Christ saves the church. Christ serves the church. Christ sacrifices for the church. Christ saves the church. The church does not save Christ. The church does not serve Christ. Christ doesn't need your service. He doesn't. He's God. He's above that. So, the church serves Christ, if we're going to use that word, through obedience, through submission, through, through respect. And so the arrow of service goes from Christ to the church. In the same way, the husband serves the wife. The wife is not expected to save the husband. It's the husband who serves and the wife who respects the service. And this idea sort of flows into all sorts of gender roles as well, which is a whole nother Pandora's box of topics. So, the thing to recognize with this and with this and with this is, oh, this. The husband is not equal to the wife. Uh, yeah. This is the point in which I'd see a couple hands raised. I'm just guessing. So, Ephesians 5 dismisses an egalitarian view of gender and more specifically, the husband and wife dynamic. The husband is not equal to the wife. The husband is above the wife. Why? Because we have the "upotasis." It's a rank, a proper ordering. Now, one thing to note is they are equal as people. So the wife is not less of a person than the husband. It's not, he's 100% and this one's 90, or even 99. They're not, it's not an equality of value. It's an equality of rank. A general is not equal to a private in the military. They're equal as people. They have this, so we see that, like, they're equal under the law. You know, if, if the general commits a murder to the private, his ranking doesn't remove him from his guilt, because the private is a person equal to the general. And so the husband and wife are equal in their role as people, as their value before God as individuals, but their office is of a higher order. Why is it of a higher order? Because jobs have to be done orderly. God has a hierarchy in mind as he sets relationships in order. And this makes a lot of sense when we're talking about parents and children. Children are not the boss of the parents. Oh, man, are they not the boss. So many times, a child would like to usurp the authority of the parent. And the parent says, no. And the child is put back in their place. Master and slave, employer, employee. The slave or the employee does not get to dictate its work to the master. That's not a proper ordering. There is a proper ordering of things between husband and wife, parent and child, master and slave. Now, so there isn't an equality of office. The husband's called to lead. The husband's called to be the head. It's his job to lead and to do these things for the family. It's his job to sacrifice for the wife. It's his job to do the things necessary for the livelihood of the family. It's his job to do the things necessary for the livelihood of wife and child. And things go wrong when it doesn't happen. And you, you can see this, well, I see this in marital counseling, and you might see it when a friend or family where the husband loses his job for an extended period of time. The marriage is strained if the wife, say, has to go to work and she's the only one working and the husband's at home wanting to work but unable to do so. This causes, this often causes a frustration here because the role is not being fulfilled as it ought. The husband knows he is supposed to be doing his job, and if he can't do it, he's thankful for his wife stepping in, but he desires to have his job, to be the way it's supposed to be. In the same way, there are times as we get older in which a child may care for a parent. The parent would prefer to continue to be the parent, and the parent doesn't necessarily lose authority and respect, but the child will have to do things, and we start to see a tension there. And not like fighting, but just a tension, a knowledge of things have gone wrong in their order. Does this mean wives can't work? Let's stop and hit that one for a second. If husbands are supposed to sacrifice for the wife and family, does that mean wives aren't allowed to work? The answer is no. Wives are allowed to work. Proverbs 31, the woman sells at the market. She is well-respected in the community. She sells her where she is serving the household well. There's absolutely no reason to think that a wife can't work in the marketplace or in the, in whatever community. She can be at home, she can be working, she can do both. It, there's no restriction here. That's not what anyone's saying. Well, that's what some people say, but they're, you know, stupid. So not equal in rank or position, equal in vertical and other sort of aspects. Let's talk for a moment about when these roles, we talked a little bit about when they're ignored or when they're shirked, shirked, or put aside. So a story for a moment. My home church is one of the few remaining in the synod that does not permit women to vote in their voters' assembly. Which any of you who've been around a while know that that was fairly common up until late 70s, early 80s. And then churches opened up the voting assembly for women. And one of the big issues, or one of the arguments that I hear from those who are at my home church still and discuss the issue is the idea that if women were given permission to vote, that men would then shirk their responsibility. Now, one might then say, well, isn't that the men's problem? And the answer is yes, it's their fault, not women's fault for showing up and participating. However, what happens, and this is male sinfulness back from Adam, is that, so if men are called to lead, and instead, instead of the woman submitting, the woman desires to lead, the men will let them. So if men are called to be the head and to lead their families, their organizations, the church, if this is the role given to them, and the wives don't submit, but instead usurp, and sure, I'll use that word, or desire to take the lead, men in their sin, so again, women desiring to lead would be, are taking the role of husband would be sinful. That's the Eve sin. So Eve wants to take the place of her husband as the head, and the husband, or Adam, has, will have the tendency in his sinful nature to allow it to happen. And so the wife will take this office, and the husband will take the other. And then neither are doing what they ought to be doing, which is not God-pleasing, and it's a reversal of God's order. And so the idea with that, with my home congregation is that if women are given the position to lead in the voters' assembly, because voting is a form of leading, then the men will start to disappear because no longer do they have the role of leading. It's been taken from them, and so they'll just let others lead. Now, this is a general concept in which these roles are reversed, both in the family and in organizations. And there's a wider question as to whether or not voting is an act of authority, and even wider question of, should the church be voting? Now, I'm not gonna throw away the entire structure of our church, but there's a good argument for, no, there's no reason for the church to vote. Because the church is called to submit, not to lead. And so the, the polity, which is the order of the way a church is organized, the polity, if it's, if it is to reflect the husband and wife dynamic, or the Christ and church dynamic, then you should have your representative of Christ be the leader and the church submitting. Now, what does that mean? It means you as the congregation shut up and listen to everything that I say because I'm the boss. See, there's a problem in that. And that's actually how the church began in America. So the Lutheran church began with a bishop overseeing the congregation. The bishop was corrupt. He was an adulterer, and he was an alcoholic, and he was stealing the church wine, and he was sleeping with the church women. And so that whole model sort of blew up within the first 20 years of Lutherans being in America. And it was CFW Walther who established the idea of having a voters' assembly and to have the congregation have authority, so the individual congregation having authority rather than a single bishop, which is why the Synod and Convention can only make recommendations. And the district president can't actually tell you what to do. It's the congregation that's given the authority. But it's a little weird that we can vote out pure doctrine with a two-thirds majority. We can, as a voting assembly, say, this church doesn't believe Jesus Christ was raised from the dead as long as we have two-thirds of the people present, which at our voters' meetings is like 10 people. If I can get 10 people to say Jesus wasn't really raised from the dead, we can vote that into the Constitution and it's just valid. So there's a problem there. And how do you solve that problem? Well, you solve that problem by having a well-educated laypeople. If your congregation doesn't know the first thing about Scripture and the doctrines of the church, then they're more susceptible to making stupid decisions and unfaithful decisions when it comes to the church. So it's one of those things where I would like to instead make all voters have to attend Bible class so that, you know, you aren't stupid when it comes to the matters of the church. Now, most of the things decided in voters' meetings are administrative, and so it doesn't usually have a scriptural or spiritual angle to it, but at the same time where the church, everything we do has a spiritual component to it. So anyway, that was a small tangent. All right. Let's move to parent and child, which is far less controversial and shouldn't take nearly as much time. So looking at chapter six, we'll look at 1 through 9. "Children, obey your parents in the Lord, for this is right. Honor your father and mother. This is the first commandment with a promise, that it may go well with you, that you may live long in the land. Fathers, do not provoke your children to anger, but bring them up in the discipline and instruction of the Lord. Slaves, obey your earthly masters with fear and trembling, with a sincere heart as you would Christ, not by the way of eye service as people-pleasers, but as servants of Christ, doing the will of God from the heart, rendering service with a goodwill as to the Lord and not to man, knowing that whatever good anyone does, this he will receive back from the Lord, whether he is a slave or free. Masters, do the same to them, and stop your threatening, knowing that he who is both their master and yours is in heaven, and that there is no partiality with him." So let's stop for a second there and look at the last verse of, of that section, 6:9. "Knowing that he who is both their master and yours is in heaven, and that there is no partiality with him." In other words, when we're dealing with all of these roles and responsibilities, we should remember that at all times we have a king over all of this who shows no partiality between husband and wife, parent and child, master and slave. And so how those who have the role and responsibility of leadership and headship need to recognize that if they abuse their authority, if they mistreat those under them, there is a master in heaven who will judge upon them. And so this is, in a sense, the warning for the master, the parent, the husband, that, and those who are in authority, that ultimately the authority returns to God in his judgment. And so we will be held accountable for how we live in these positions. In the same way, so will the wife, child, and slave. But it's more of a threat to those who have authority that there is one with greater authority. So the next question, what role do parents have with their children? What role do children have? How does this mirror Christ and the church? So we see children are called to obey for it is right. So it's the proper ordering. So children are to obey. Parents now take on the role, the same role as husbands. They are to love and lead and not provoke. Not abuse, basically. But discipline. So how you understand the concept of discipline is obviously multifaceted and has to be dealt with in a far broader topic, but discipline ought to occur. Discipline is how children are shaped in their lives. So creating a discipline of hard work, creating a discipline that avoids laziness, that builds courage, obedience, those sort of things are all good. So the child's job is to obey, to submit and respect. And the same thing follows from this discussion into here about whether or not if the parent asks the child to do something sinful and the child disobeys, they have sinned here, but they also are called not to, or to reject sinful commands. So, again, dealing with broken people. So again, we have the fourth commandment, the command with a promise that things may go well with you. So that's the promise given to the Israelites. If they respect authority, life will go well, which is true because it will reflect the relationship between themselves and God. So again, when we keep Christ and the church, as long as we keep this order in perspective and have it reflect in these, or if we have these things shown in our lives, it means we are mirroring this relationship. So we, as we do these things, we understand that this is at work, which is good because then that, it keeps the salvation and the cross before us. So discipline and instruction and not provoking. Pretty straightforward if you have kids. Paul next deals with slaves and masters. Does Paul endorse slavery here? What would be a fitting modern application? Paul is not endorsing slavery, but instead discussing its nature and role in society. So Scripture does not ever endorse or promote slavery in the sense that it says that it's good, but it is a reality of society in which if it's going to exist, there are ways in which it would be properly ordered. And so this is sort of this idea that we're properly ordering these structures. In the same, so for example, what about childless families? Are they commanded to have children because parents have to love their children or, and that sort of thing? Same with single people. If you're not married, how do these roles reflect? So this is roles and responsibilities, the place given by God. If you're given by God the role of husband, the role of wife, the role of parent, the role of child, the role of master, the role of slave, if that's given to you by God, then there are things you ought to do. If these aren't given to you, then you don't necessarily have to worry about them. If I'm not a parent, I don't have to worry about children obeying me, nor disciplining them. Not my job, not my child. If I'm not an employer, I don't have to worry about how slaves treat me or how they respect me. If I don't have a master, I don't have to worry about being abused by one. So if it's not given to me by God, then I don't have these responsibilities. Now, all of us are children, but some of us are orphans, and so or our parents have died. So there isn't this obeying and submitting going on anymore. But all of us have been children under guardians. So it's not an endorsement. It is a description of proper, of proper behavior in a social situation that exists. A fitting modern application is employer and employee because we're talking about working and how we work in the workplace, whether with eye service and people-pleasing, or if we're actually doing our real work. So how are servants to act under their masters? How are masters to act? Again, we see the same sort of ideas, obey, submit, respect. For slaves, they're to do their work. Employees are to do their work with respect and obedience, giving honor to their employers as they are deserving, or regardless of whether they're deserving, doing the will of God from the heart, rendering service with a goodwill as to the Lord and not to man. And so this is a good way of just understanding vocation in general. When we work in whatever situation, recognize that we are serving the Lord first and our employer second. So if we understand that we're serving our, our Lord first, that shapes the way that we do the things that we do. And then we're serving people second. So as long as we're being faithful to the Lord, everything else sort of falls into place. "Masters, do the same to them, and stop your threatening, knowing that he who is both their master and yours shows no partiality." So again, this is a threat against employers and those who are, I think, and all people who are in responsibility to recognize that all of this, all of these things have God above them. As every role does. So in what ways does 5 through 9 show Christ and the church? Again, in the same way it has with all these other examples. We have a love and obedience that's carried out through the church. The church does the work of Christ. in the same way that the slave does the work of the master. So, the master sort of sets the agenda, and the slave does it, as does the employer and the employee. Christ sets the agenda, and the church does it. So, and we're talking about work, it's led by the head of the church and led by Christ. Well, that's it for today. Next time, we're gonna talk about the armor of God, and it'll be our last session, so we'll finish up chapter six, and we'll have worked through the entire book of Ephesians. So, it's great having you, and enjoy the rest of your week.